Okay, at this point, I would call to order the public hearing scheduled for 6:50 this evening relative to a bond authorization amendment to increase the project appropriation and bond authorization by 1.8 million for the installation of elevators at the Sprague, Chase, Kingsbury, and Hopeville Elementary Schools as requested by Mike LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Anyone who wishes to address the Board on this topic, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the City Sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 96 Downstreet, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. I just want to say that as far as it's bond authorization amendment go, we're looking at an increase for the appropriation and bond authorization of $1,800,000 for the installation of elevators, as you so well put it, Mr. President. And I understand that none of these schools, they have any elevators at all. I know, I went to Sprague School, and my daughter went to Sprague, and my grandson went to Sprague, and I know a lot of times we were up there for the graduations and things like that, especially for my family, my brothers and sisters, because most of us all went to Sprague, graduated out of there. We used to call it the University of Sprague. I don't know why, but that's what they called it. Anyways, it was kind of silly, but when you're kids, you know, what else is new? The thing is, we had a, you know, we had a lot of things going on over there, and I know there wasn't any elevators at that time, and that was going back, probably way back when, and when my daughter was in that school too, and we couldn't understand why. I'm, I am in favor of putting elevators in all of these schools, but I'm kind of reluctant on the price over here. I was hoping you guys could maybe shave that down, that, that price of $1,800,000. I know Mr. LeBlanc does a wonderful job, and I'm concerned as a taxpayer in the City of Waterbury that maybe we could turn around and see what we can do to get that rectified, because, again, the folks out there that I know, they're struggling right now, people, you know, trying to sell their homes and, you know, just doing what they can to survive. And I know there's a lot of issues in the City of Waterbury, and I don't want to get off track, but we have a lot of potholes in the City of Waterbury. We have a lot of ruts and problems in our roads and infrastructure, and I know people got to get that helped and fixed up. But, as, that being said, I, I know that, you know, this is very important, because I do know, and I have to let everybody here know in the audience too, that being involved with the veterans, myself, that I know there's a lot, and Mike's a veteran, I know there's veterans here too, and thank you for serving, by the way, everybody. There's a lot of people that I know, when they go to the schools, they, they may be handicapped, or the veterans may be handicapped, and I know they're, you know, they're obviously with their, their kids, or they're there with their grandchildren, and they're trying to find access to the schools and get up to the elevator, because I don't know if ever been at Sprague School, but you got to go to corridor, and you got to go all the ways around with a wheelchair, and if anybody's been in a wheelchair, they know it's kind of, kind of tough to do, a tough task. And so, I do, I do support this, but I was just hoping that you guys can, ladies and gentlemen, at Board of Aldermen, to do what you can to get this price, you know, down to reasonable level. I'm, I understand that the city's going to be in hock for like 20% or 25% of the bond is going to be authorized, and I have a feeling you guys are going to vote for it, and, but the thing is, I was just hoping that we can do what we got to do to, to help the folks out, especially, you know, not just the veterans, but anybody that goes to Sprague School. But let's understand, there's also children go to school that are handicapped, and I'm sure they go to all these schools, and they have, you know, they access, they need access to the elevators, just like here. I know there's some people, when they get to become senior citizens, they have issues walking up and down the stairs here, and I, and I'm glad that the elevator is in perfect condition and operating condition, and I think it's, it's something that we need, and again, hopefully that you're going to be able to turn around and, and do what you can, and also make sure that, you know, once this is put in, I just don't want to see the price going up again. I want to see it stabilize, and hopefully it's not going to go exceed past $1,800,000. It would be nice, again, not to repeat myself, because some people say, "Oh, you guys repeat yourself all the time," but the bottom line is, as a concerned taxpayer, as a, as a resident and homeowner of the City of Waterbury, I just want you to know that we got to do-
What made, Mr. Spring?
Right. I know I always speak too much, don't I? We got to do what we have to do to make sure that the folks are going to be, you know, well worth it, if you will, for the money, for the authorization, for the bonds, and I know you members of the Board of Aldermen, the ladies and the gentlemen, you're going to do what you have to do and get things corrected. But again, we definitely need elevators, because I didn't know this, and Mr. LeBlanc brought this up to me, and he mentioned this, that we do not have elevators in some of these schools, and I have to say that, I was kind of amazed about that, because I didn't know, especially being in Sprague School. I mean, I been there, but I never needed, thank God, an elevator, but it's going to be something that's going to be well worth it, and I'm just sure that it's going to be something that's going to be, you know, needed for the citizens of Waterbury. Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and call to order the regular meeting for the Board of Aldermen for Monday, June 11, 2018. Before we stand for the pledge and the silent prayer, I would just ask that you keep Alderman Martinez McCarthy and her family in your prayer. She's not with us this evening because she had a death in her family recently, so with that, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Alderwoman Cavalo.
Here.
Alderwoman Cato.
Here.
Alderman DeGiovincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy is not here. Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujam.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Perneruski.
Here.
14 present, one absent.
Thank you. Just a little out of order this evening, because I know there's a lot of people here to speak on this issue, and one of the reasons we were late, as I indicated before starting the public hearing, was because there's a resolution that we're going to add to the agenda this evening dealing with the F&amp;G transfer station, and there were versions that were being worked on until just before we started, so we had to get them printed up. We do have that now, and since I know people are here to talk about it, what I would do at this point is entertain a motion to add that item, which is the most recent one that you all got, simply entitled Resolution in Opposition of the Proposed Expansion of the Garbage Transfer Station on 260 Railroad Hill Street, to the agenda as New Business Item Number 13 and refer to the Intergovernmental Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The item is added. With that, we will then go back to the regular order of business, and the next item would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the Board on any topic, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the City Sheriff. Again, please state your name and address for the record, so the clerk will have it, and there is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Clerk, I mean, Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 14 Quentin Street, Steve Shraggs.
My name is Steve Shraggs. I live at 14 Quentin Street. I'm here to address the resolution that Alderman Peneruski just mentioned. Addressed this Board a number of times about this concerns. I did do another summary of some of the fact sheets and whatnot, sent it to all the Aldermen, and the title of Brass City, yes, Trash City, no, thanks to one of my neighbors, Ruth Barry, that's her slogan, so I won't take any credit for it. You know, this proposal, on the face of it, just has so many defects, it's hard to know which one to focus on. I mean, there's concerns about traffic in neighborhoods. This is, this is a map, and I apologize that it may not be easy to see. This is where F&amp;G is located, on Eagle and Railroad Hill. All red lines are the streets that the City Zoning Commission said that these trucks may go on as alternate routes, and basically what they are is alternate routes off of 84, because even though that the proposal is that they will all go 84 Route 8 South, the zoning commission's own expert acknowledged the reality, is that, guess what, sometimes these trucks are not going to go 84-8. They're going to go other ways, which includes Country Club Road, Highland Avenue, East Mountain, Pearl Lake Road, and so, 140, and actually it's more than 140, trucks a day going through these neighborhoods is going to be quite a challenge, not just to the people who live there, but to the city streets. And actually, one of the things that we found out last week is, there is in fact a natural gas line on the sidewalk that these trucks are going to be crossing every single day. I called EverSource about this. They were not aware that there might be 140 trucks crossing one of their gas lines, because there are stickers on the sidewalk that says, "Do not dig." And the reason why this became a concern to me is I had four of my neighbors had to pay for water main repairs, because there were construction trucks that built Gil Martin School that destroyed the water main pipes in the middle of the street. Well, if those construction trucks can destroy water main pipes, can 140 or more garbage trucks full every day do any kind of damage to a propane gas line? I don't think anyone has even looked at this issue. There's a whole list of issues that are part, I'm not sure exactly what the latest version of the resolution is, but things, whether it's odors and the concern about that, they have told us that they have an odor control system, but they've given us no locations of where it exists, so that we could talk to people who live there to find out if it works. We have found out there's risks of dangerous fires, spontaneous fires, 300 of these or so a year across the country. There is a long list of environmental justice issues. Waterbury is a community that is full of people who have challenges, and who have challenges making, playing a role in how government works, and the state environmental justice law is created to help improve their odds and their ability to engage in it. F&amp;G, I can give you a long list of things they have not done to comply with that law. So I urge you all to consider and pass the resolution. I brought something else up with me, because I wanted to sort of impress upon you that what we face in the south end of Waterbury isn't just a concern about this garbage plant. This is one of six binders I still have to read, which is about the Sinagro problem of the mercury pollution in our air, because we, we have mercury pollution, are 23% above the EPA standard for more than a year. So this is my light bedtime reading. The point is, the south end already has enough. We don't need any more. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 45 Rear Street, Sharon Salaskas.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to approach the Board tonight. Sharon Salaskas from Pear Street, and I've been here before. I'm very concerned over what I've seen at least three of the meetings I've gone to, between F&amp;G, information presented to you, information presented to the zoning commission. I read what came out, and I quote, "I was between a rock and a hard place," O'Leary said, "so we agreed to a settlement that would cut the amount of tons per day from 700 to 350, reduce the trucks from 140 to 61." Prove it! I read the proposed settlement. It does not limit to 350 tons. It is open-ended. DEEP would only allow at most 1,000. Let me ask you a question. One garbage truck that leaks on your street, you can smell it for two or three days. No one comes, cleans it up unless you call the city, and it's bad enough for them to do a simple wash-down. It's dangerous, it breeds bugs, vermin will show up there, it can make your children sick, it can make your pets sick. Multiply that times 60, times 70, times 200. Imagine what the south end of Waterbury is going to smell like. I don't want to think about it, but I have to. I live on Pear Street. I get the noise, I get the pollution, we get the inversion. It doesn't go away. And now, in an already, think about this, socially and economically depressed and compromised area, which meets the definitions of environmental justice, and social justice, and economic justice, you want to impose more upon us? I have to worry about the legal implications. Despite laws, regulation ordinances, people in the south end don't share the same environmental health, safety, and justice as other portions of the city and the state. DEEP says, "Environmental justice means that all people should be treated fairly under environmental laws regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, or an economic status." They state in their own cover sheet on the website that they are to assess the effectiveness of DEEP efforts in the state's urban areas, assess and respond to environmental problems in low-income and minority communities, develop strategies to increase public participation in the agency's decision-making process, identify community health concerns and consultation with local and state departments of health, enhance public participation in administrative proceedings, educate the public on Connecticut DEEP regulations, policies, and procedures. I'm not sure even one of those has been done. I haven't been approached personally. I have not been invited by DEEP or F&amp;G to any meetings. F&amp;G has not answered our questions. We have been to many meetings. We said, "How many trucks? Where are they going?" They tell us 60 trucks, but they forget to tell us that that's really 120, because it's one truck in, one truck out. They have not told us how many trucks come in there already. That has to be added to that total. Is it? I doubt it. I can't prove it, but I doubt it. In addition to that, we asked, "What about fires? What are you doing for that?" No answer. My husband went through a walkthrough at the property. No one was allowed to ask questions, and they showed only a small portion of the plant that was clean as a whistle. I'm sorry, but when someone asked about fire protection, they weren't even allowed to follow that. Is this honest to the city? What's going to happen to the City of Waterbury if something happens there?
One minute, Ms. Moskis.
No, I want to keep talking, and I don't understand sometimes why we're prevented from talking when other people can talk a lot longer. It's not fair to us. But you've got the trucks, you have the odors, you also have what you call cumulative sighting. It is not just one plant or one business. We have the sewage treatment plant, we have all the businesses that pollute, we have the river that's polluted, and by the way, F&amp;G will also pollute the river, they already are. And when we ask them, "What are you going to do to keep your floors clean?" "Oh, we're going to wash them and let the water run out the door." Think about that, okay? I'm appalled at this. It doesn't belong in my backyard, it doesn't belong in anybody's backyard. We asked F&amp;G, "You have another plant in a better location that won't put the burden on people in the city." Well, it doesn't have a concrete floor. My answer to that is, "Put one in there."
That's time.
Your expense to put the floor in is less than the harm you're going to have to pay for what you do to us.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Thank you, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Steuben Street. On to F&amp;G. They're looking at 700 tons of municipal solid waste and recyclables per day. I know you've been told that it's less than that, but that's the permit that they're going for up in Hartford, 750 tons. And for many of you, you attended the environmental justice hearing at F&amp;G that I was at, as were some elected officials, state rep, state senator, and Alderman. And we were all huddled into a small room in the office, not given much of a presentation. Many of us could not find a site, because there was no signage, and to be quite honest, I think they were disrespectful to all of us, because they didn't have an agenda, they didn't have answers for questions that were given, and never had a follow-up meeting. And this is the company that wants to haul in 700 tons of garbage into this city a day. It's not the kind of company, I think, that is being a good neighbor. Then we had the zoning commission, and the proper rejection of this proposal. Then we had Corporation Counsel with a settlement, and as part of that settlement, it was talked about that this was going to be 350 tons a day. It's not true. The City of Waterbury, if they put a contract with these people, are going to be able to add more than 200 tons a day of municipal waste and recyclables, and in addition to that, private haulers. It's really open-ended. There's no limit as to what the city can give in addition to the 350 tons, which is why they're going for the 700 tons up in Hartford. This is a sham, this being perpetuated on the citizens, and the Aldermen here in Waterbury. And then, to make matters worse, this is really a health issue for odors, and, and maybe rats and other things that will be there. Do you know that the Corporation Counsel and that contract settled that they have to, that we have to give them a 48-hour notice before anybody can go on their site? The Health Department doesn't have to give anybody notice to go on a site and check for a health violation, but in the settlement, they have to be given 48-hours notice. I guess that's so they can clean up the site and get rid of the rats. Is that the kind of settlement that this city gets involved in? This is what got signed off on. And what about our Greenway? How many of us have been on that Greenway Commission when that thing started? Federal money, state money, city money put into that Greenway? And where's the route for this 700 tons a day? Nogatuck exit, all the way down South Main Street, all the way parallel with the Greenway? And when they talked about traffic, they didn't even know that as part of the Greenway, South Main Street is being reduced to a two-lane street, one lane in each direction. So now you're going to have 700 tons of garbage being driven down a two-way street with the Greenway on one side. Isn't that going to be a pleasant smell? For all the money and all the efforts that we put in from federal, state, and city money to get that Greenway going. And what about the traffic? This is now no different than Highland Avenue, this South Main Street. Can you imagine 700 tons of garbage being driven a day down Highland Avenue? Because that's what we're looking at for a road.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
And then you have the Route 80 and 84 rebuilding. When they start tearing up 8 and 84, the mix master, where do you think all this traffic is going? It's all going to go down the local streets. And what about, we all know about garbage trucks, there's leakage. What about what's on the streets? Are we going to be having the city running around with the equipment to clean up the garbage that's on the streets left by these trucks? And, you know, you've got private handlers involved here. They say, "Don't worry, everybody's going to follow the same route, and if they don't, they're going to be fired." How does F&amp;G fire a private handler? I mean, the whole concept of this is ridiculous. The whole consent agreement with the City of Waterbury by Corporation Counsel is ridiculous. It's an affront to the people of the city. And this last site walk, this past Thursday, was a disgrace. They need, they were, it was going to be 1 o'clock. They extended it to 3 o'clock because it took them that long-
That's time, Mr. DePillo.
Thank you, I'll be one second.
One second.
Okay. Took them that long to clean up the site, and when there was materials there, and we asked what they were, they refused to answer. Never showed the operation, never showed anything except a spotless floor that they spent an entire day or two getting ready. Do me, I really hope you people approve this resolution tonight, and we'd love to know where the mayor and this administration is on this issue. Thank you. And thank you, thank you for the extra minute.
I'll get it back from you some other time, sir.
Next speakers, Mr. President, is Kamal Kurtzman, 239 Farmington Avenue, and Taylor Robinson from 71 Notick Street. They're going to speak together.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity.
Can you just pull that microphone, and would you say your name and address again for the record, both of you?
Hi. Okay. My name is Camille Kurtzman.
Taylor Robertson.
And your addresses?
Yes, 239 Farmington Ave.
Thank you.
We are part of an organization called CHISP. CHISP is an environmental organization focusing on environmental issues facing people of color.
Hello, my name is Taylor Robertson from Hartford. I'm a high school student. I'm here today to stand with Waterbury South End. My neighborhood is not much different.
I'm going to let you finish, but I have to tell you that our rules require speakers to be taxpayers or citizens of Waterbury, so the fact that you're from Hartford would mean you wouldn't be able to address the Board. Since you've started, and the two of you are together, I'll give you the five minutes, you can use it up, but I just want to let you know that, so I don't want people coming in here from out of town all the time. Those are the rules, so go ahead.
I live in a community of color located a mile away from a trash incinerator. I've suffered from health issues related to my environment my whole life. I have asthma, and most members of my family developed asthma once we moved here. As a child, I could not play outside with the other children at my school, because I could not breathe. I am here, standing up for Waterbury South End, so they do not have to suffer as I do. On behalf of CHISP and youth like myself who just want to play outside, please reconsider this project.
Thank you. A person's health condition should not be determined by where they live. However, this is the reality experienced by residents of Waterbury South End. Should the F&amp;G facility be expanded, it will wage terrible consequences for a community already marginalized by terrible odor and pollution. As found in a study by DEEP, Waterbury's air quality has been very, has been rated very poorly, and expanding the facility will only worsen the circumstances. Should the facility expand, over 120 diesel trucks would emit their harmful toxins all over the south end, making those who live nearby very much prone to respiratory illnesses. Please consider the people of Waterbury before making a decision that could be fatal to the community. Thank you.
Next speaker from 120 Hillside Avenue, Sophia Weber.
Hi, I'd like to correct that it's actually 170 Hillside Avenue, Apartment 3A. That way you guys all know where I live.
And you, just your name again.
My name is Sophia Weber, W-E-B-E-R, one single B. I'm a member of Waterbury Mutual Aid and Defense Network and the Industrial Workers of the World, Local 620. I have been tracking the air quality across the city for about two months now. I've been tracking it on a measure of what's called PM 2.5, that is particulate matter below 2.5 micrometers in diameter. These are the kind of particles that can get way deep into the inside of your lungs, they can get into your cardiovascular system, these are the kinds that cause asthma. Our city has a problem with this, this, this kind of air pollution. It's not just in the neighborhoods you might think it is. It's in my neighborhood in Hillside. I've noticed it in Town Plot. Town Plot is actually one of the worst affected, and so if any of you from Town Plot think that you are able to pollute the other areas in the city and escape unscathed, you're wrong, and the joke is on you. The egg is on your face. And that's a problem for all of us, because any decisions you guys make here, or any that are made by the zoning Board, we all have to live with, and we are supposed to be able to trust you to make these kinds of decisions. But there's not a whole lot of science background amongst you. I don't see a lot of you mining the data yourselves, I don't see a lot of you asking these questions, and it makes me very concerned about the future of this city, but it reflects the past of the city very well. I don't know if I have a lot else to say, so take it as you will.
Next speaker from 30 Madison Street, State Representative Jerry Reyes Jr.
I don't know if I have a lot else to say, so take it as you will.
Next speaker from 30 Madison Street, State Representative Jerry Reyes, Jr.
Good evening, Geraldo Reyes, 30 Madison Street. And good evening to the entire Board of Aldermen. And I just come here very simply to state that I have never changed or wavered from my decision and position that I am 100% opposed to any transfer expansion at that garbage plant at 260 Railroad Hill. And I've taken a lot of flak for this whole concept of not in my backyard, but I've been very clear and very transparent from the beginning. I don't believe it should even be in Waterbury. And that's, that's been my position all along. And I think that there are still other options that we can actually look at, and I'm not going to go into all the details that the speakers already covered tonight. It's just not environmentally justice for the City of Waterbury. And we will continue this conversation tomorrow night with the State of Connecticut and the Department of Environmental Protection. We believe that the, we don't believe, we actually know that the environmental justice law was not met. And we will continue this conversation in full detail tomorrow with the data, the information, the charts, and everything that's needed to show where the proposal was not met. And again, not, want to be crystal clear that it's not a situation of not in my backyard. I would venture to say wholeheartedly, as a stakeholder in the South End that's been down there for over 40 years, I think we have enough down there already. And so this whole thing of not in my backyard, I would say, does not apply to the South End since we already hold most of the toxins in the City of Waterbury already down there now. And I think that any resolution that the Board of Aldermen should consider, should consider the entire City of Waterbury. And I thank you all for your service and your time. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker from 41 North Leonard Street, Lisa Velez.
Lisa Velez, 41 North Leonard Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. I'll be short and sweet. You all have the facts and figures. You've heard the other speakers. As President of the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, what we're asking you is to support the neighborhood groups. Just show that you care. Sign the resolution. Show that you care about the people in the neighborhood. That's all we're asking. Just show that you care. Sign the resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I just wanted to say, I know that there's a lot of people here about this issue in the South End, and I agree with them. You know, I don't believe that we need that many trucks or garbage when we're rejuvenating that part of the city. I will say, one of the previous speakers said that they don't know where the mayor and this administration stands on it. I think the mayor was quite clear on the radio last week stating that he was not happy about it, that he didn't think that it was the right fit for that part of the town when we're investing in that part of town. You know, past, past years and past administrations have forgotten that part of town, and he didn't think that that was a good fit. And he suggested to the people on the radio show that we need to show a sign of force and come together when the DEP comes in for their hearing. I mean, folks, there's only so much that this board and, you know, the public hearings with the zoning boards could do. They have to follow the law. The people that make that law is Hartford and the DEP. And now I know that the representative that spoke before us has been a total advocate and advocating for the people on the South End, and he's done a magnificent job. But you can't come here and blame this board and the zoning board and this mayor. You know, they have to go by what the law is. And until somebody changes that law, it's not like we could come here and say, "It's not going to happen." And the law set by the State of Connecticut says otherwise. So I think we really need to show a sign of force with the State of Connecticut that we don't think that this is the right thing. And we got to stop blaming the wrong people because the people that are getting blamed are the people that are trying to work with everybody involved. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1659 Thomason Avenue, James Monroe.
Good evening, James Monroe, 1569 Thomason Avenue. I won't take much of your time, but I would ask you, President Paul Petruski, when I finish talking, can I have the rest of my time and I stand in protest of this? The main thing I want to point out to everyone in this room, it seems that all the waste treatment plants and the garbage dumps always in the black and brown neighborhood, and that's throughout the State of Connecticut. And I'm asking Waterbury to be the first to not to let this happen. And I appreciate it. I'd like to remain my, my rest of my five minutes in protest.
To tell you the truth, Mr. Monroe, I think your cause would be better served if you just let the other speakers come through. This is really a time to address the board, so I would prefer that you sit down. I don't want to get in an argument with you about it, but I think I'd prefer that you sit down and let the other speakers who are waiting be heard.
I will sit if you will say time's up.
Thank you, sir. Your point is well made.
Next speaker from 56 Phyllis Avenue, Arthur J. Dunn, Sr.
Good evening. I'm not going to repeat all the figures that have been presented to you over the last year and a half. They haven't changed much. I know a number of you people on the Board of Aldermen are probably too, maybe too young to remember when Waterbury was named the brass city of the world. Well, now we're taking on the effect of trash city of the world. When is enough enough? It's a noted fact, when these types of businesses go into any particular neighborhood, they find a minority group or a minority neighborhood in a poor neighborhood. And that's exactly what is happening down in the South End. I don't have to tell you about the asthma rate that's in the city, and how many of our children miss school because of asthma, make visits to the emergency room because of asthma, and any other type of illness from breathing. It's plain and simple, folks. We are asking you to just back this resolution because we think it's necessary for us to continue to try to eliminate, eliminate this type of business coming into Waterbury. And I know just recently you all passed a request by the mayor to get funds to take care of the Animate site. And so what we were going to do is we're going to clean up the Animate site, make it developable, and to what kind of business would want to go near a garbage plant? Does it make any sense to me at all, really? So all I can say is, the old story is, the ball is in your court. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the Tuesday, May 15, 2018, special meeting with the department heads, the Monday, May 21, 2018, regular meeting, and the Wednesday, May 30, 2018, final budget public hearing.
Mr. President, motion approved minutes of department heads on Tuesday, May 15, 2018, a regular meeting on Monday, May 21, 2018, and the final budget public hearing held on Wednesday, May 30, 2018. So move.
Second. Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. The mayor isn't here this evening for his report. He's out of the state at the mayor's conference. But I did have a conversation with him this afternoon with respect to this FNG resolution, and he wanted to make clear that the issues are separate. The issue with the zoning board was one that was a matter of law, and he, the city acted on the best legal advice that it had at the time. People may disagree with that, but at the end of the day, the distinction was between a larger number of trucks coming in, which seemed the likely result of continuing that legal fight, or controlling the number of trucks. And that's where that came down. With respect to the deep hearing, he is fully in support of environmental justice. As you know, he's been very supportive of putting money into the South End, of cleaning up the brownfields and the other things. And so as far as this goes, it's a DEEP process, and they have to go through the process. But he is supportive of what was said today, that the city is entitled to environmental justice. The citizens of Waterbury are entitled to the full process and protections of that law. He just wanted to make sure that that was clear today since he couldn't be here to give his normal report. So with that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with the Finance Committee, and then we'll go to the Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
Item number three. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the substantial amendment for CD year 43, 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan to relocate excess funds from three splash pad projects, Martin Luther King Curtain and Hamilton Parks, in the amount of $130,003, $850, $3,000, to air conditioning projects, North End and River Baldwin Rec. Centers, as requested by Diane Tolan, Housing and Community Planning Project Director, Office of Community Development.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Alderman. These, I believe these projects recently came in front of us for renovating these splash pads. I'm curious as to why do we have extra funds?
It's simply a matter of the bidding process, sir. In the splash pads, the bids came in under the allocation that was proposed last year. And then conversely, in the air conditioning projects, those bids came in over the allocation. So in order to make sure that we could do all of these projects this program year, that's the need to sort of shift these funds. You did approve a couple of weeks ago the contracts because it's really imperative to get these underway. And by doing that, you put into place having city funds make up that difference. What this resolution and substantial amendment will do is basically take those city funds out, put these funds in the right project line items, if you would, and then allow the city not to have to spend its money because we have adequate federal money.
Thank you very much. I think there was some confusion concerning maybe they were taking funds from that project. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Alderman Nuji.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So again, nothing is being decreased of the splash.
No, nothing is being, nothing is being decreased. The three parks will get their splash pads as programmed, and then the air conditioning units for River Baldwin and for the North End Rec will go forward.
So it's not like they're getting smaller splash pad to save costs or anything?
No, no, absolutely not. It's the same, it's really a replication of the ones that were done previous in the city. We did them at Waterville and some of the other parks last year. So it's, I think they've honed the craft maybe a little bit better, I'm not sure, but it came in under by the.
Will this give a better indication of the cost of future splash pads around?
I don't know. It's a, you know, you, I mean, the engineers do their estimates, you know, based on the given conditions at any time. So I think we had had them come in previously around that $100,000 mark, which is why when the Parks Department, you know, came forward last year in CD year 43, that allocation was put in place. So it was a competitive bid environment, though, which was very good, certainly for us.
Okay, thank you. I was, the way I read it previously, I thought they were eliminating it as well.
Oh, no, no, they'll be, they'll be wonderful, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Item number four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the CD year 44, 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan and authorize Mayor Neil M. O'Leary to submit the plan and execute any and all related document as requested by Diane C. Tolan, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Sherman.
Thank you. How does an organization qualify for these types of funds? And who makes the decision who actually gets the funding and at what level they're funded?
Any nonprofit would be, you know, eligible to apply for this. Generally speaking, sir, the process starts around January each year, and on the city's website, we'll sort of open up this CDVG mailing list and then create the application form for that. We also provide two technical assistance workshops, so if a nonprofit group is unfamiliar with the process, we're available to assist them, you know, in getting through the process, if you would, the application. And then the Citizens Advisory Committee, who is appointed by the mayor, and you have representatives, you know, from the Board of Aldermen on the committee, holds the first public hearing. There are two public hearings that are required on the needs of the community. It allows people to come out, the nonprofit groups to come out, to sort of really plead their cases, if you would, whether it's a Parks Department also coming out, or whether it's Greater Waterbury Interfaith Ministries, St. Vincent de Paul. I mean, you fund a whole host of various nonprofits here in the city. The CAC then reviews those applications that are submitted. We generally give people around a 30-day process, you know, in order to submit the applications. The CAC holds anywhere from two to three evaluation meetings on those applications. And then at the end of that process, they develop a draft plan, which gets public widespread, it gets sent to everyone who's submitted applications. And it's a 30-day public comment period for anyone to come out and say either, "Thank you for including me in the draft plan," or "Please reconsider." After the 30-day comment period is up, the CAC meets again to review those comments and can either make adjustments or keep the draft planned as is, and then brings that draft plan here to the Board of Aldermen for your review and approval.
Do we provide oversight and verification that the funds are spent and what they're actually allocated for?
Oh, absolutely, yes. I mean, the, once this process is completed here, we complete the Annual Action Plan, which is done online, along with other documents that get sent to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. They have 45 days to review and approve the city's annual action plan. They wait for congressional release before they make the final, you know, announcement, if you would. Grant agreements are sent to the mayor's office, and Corporation Counsel reviews those agreements. They get sent back to the government. The city's letter of credit gets increased. But there are contract documents that have also been developed by the Corporation Counsel's office. So there are subrecipient agreements that all of the agencies must sign. So it's the complete city compliance package that goes into it, everything from insurance, debarment certifications, annual financial disclosure statements. It is quite an involved process, if you would. And then, and then we also monitor, my office monitors. We get monthly statements that are called the Direct Benefit Assistance Reports. We get monthly statements that are called the Direct Benefit Assistance Reports. We review all the invoices and approval of processing, and then we go out and physically visit, you know. So, and the, on the other side, on the construction side, it's a little bit different, depending upon whether it's a nonprofit, but it's also the city agencies. For example, we work very closely with Parks and also Department of Engineering.
Has there ever been a situation with any of these non-for-profits that we had similar to what we had with item number three, where we provide a certain amount of funding and their project comes in under, that there's leftover monies? If there has, what do we do with those leftover monies?
Generally speaking, the nonprofit piece of this is mostly the provision of social services. So for example, Gwim or Case Management with, whether it be Safe Haven or with Catholic Charities, those are, you know, depending upon what the project line item is, it's either staff, salaries, benefits, it's utilities, it may be program supplies, things of that nature. We have had situations in the past where one or two of the public service agencies have either ceased operations, as we had with Family Services, and then which case we have to come back to the, to the Board of Alderman because if you eliminate or you cancel an activity, you can't just reprogram those funds on your own, you have to come back here. In situations where we have, for example, a construction project that comes in under, as you did, you know, a couple of weeks ago with Hopeville Park, yes, it was Hopeful Park with the new playscape, that had not been included when it was originally allocated, so it was considered a substantial amendment, and a public hearing is done, all of those. So I mean, there is quite an involved process with that.
Thank you very much, and I thank you again for your very clear answers on all the questions I've ever asked of you.
We're always available to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Item 11, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve relative to a bond authorization amendment to increase citywide energy savings project appropriations and bond authorization of $4 million to include street lighting acquisition and LED conversation and energy savings measured as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
The motion is to request a public hearing in this chamber, June 25th, 6:55 p.m.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? All business. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Bond Authorization Amendment to Increase Project Appropriations and Bond Authorization of $1,800,000 for the installation of elevators at Spreg Chase Kingsbury-Hopeville Elementary School, as, schools, as requested by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Sherman?
Thank you again. Thank you, Mike.
Good evening.
I, I understand there was some confusion over the full scope of this project when it was first put out to bid, or the bonding first came in front of us. Has this been put out for RFP yet, or are we awaiting this approval to put it out for RFP?
We're awaiting approval. With this approval in place, the next step would be to have the state school construction unit approve the proposed design specifications for these elevators, and then at that point in time, the next step would be to obtain their approval to go out to bid, and then it would go out to bid.
And just like any of our other bonding, this is the max level, we could come under it possibly?
That's correct. There, there, there's definitely reasonable contingencies in these numbers, certainly hopeful that when all is said and done, there'll be a savings against the overall authorization. And just for a point of clarification, these projects, we are anticipating that they will be approved through the state for funding through the school construction program, of which they will contribute approximately 78% of the cost of these elevators.
78% of the, was it 3.7?
3.5 in total, correct.
3.5. Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $23,066.35 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Oppose? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, June 11th, 2018. First item on our agenda is item number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Association Act applications, new opportunities, two, Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury, one, Hispanic Coalition, one, Sacred Heart High School, one, YMCA, one, as submitted by Nancy Allen, NAA Municipal Liaison, Office of Community Development. Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, item one.
Second. Second.
Right, I have a motion to approve, item one, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? For the record, I'd like to state that I will abstain from voting on item number one. Item number one passes. Next item on the agenda is item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves, subject to the Board of Education's approval at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 regular meeting, of a contract with Glen Terrace Landscaping Incorporated in the net to exceed amount of $618,135 to provide playground improvements at Chase Generali Walsh Schools, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, item six.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, item six, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Aldo Mencaro?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think it's great that, that we are taking care of our children, the schools, and the players. However, I've noticed that Washington School does not have a playground. Students play on what used to be a parking lot on concrete. Why was not Washington School included in this?
The requirement for the grant was that the, there had to be an existing playground and be renovated, not build a new one.
Okay. And is there any upcoming projects for that school?
The state has indicated there'll be a next round for these grants next year, but unless they change the requirements, we still have a couple of schools that don't have playgrounds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brenner, will the playscape be installed by the beginning of the next school year?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
I just want to point out on this, and the subsequent education ones, you'll notice that they're all subject to the approval by the Board of Education at their June 28th meeting. We had always gotten them, and we should really be getting them after they've been approved by the Board of Education. I'm not suggesting that we hold these up as we try to get these work done during the summer so they're ready for the next school year, but I want you to be aware that it is not the appropriate order to be doing it this way with the contingency on that, that approval, and we are going to be working with the Board of Education to straighten that out. They have changed this year from meeting once a week to meeting only twice, twice a month, so they have an action meeting once a month, and they have a workshop once a month, and we've got to figure out a way to get them caught up with us. But I just want you to be aware as you go into it that it is, it is unusual, probably unorthodox to do it this way. It probably makes sense because we'll get these projects done over the summer, so I'm not asking you to hold them up, but we are going to have to address this because we can't continue to go on in, in this manner. I just want, I don't want you to be unaware of it as you vote on it tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number six passes. Next item, item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves, subject to the Board of Education's approval, at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 regular meeting, an amendment, number one, to the Professional Services Agreement with PTSMA Incorporated, doing business as select physical therapy in the net to exceed amount of $88,000 to provide athletic trainer services for intercollegiate athletics, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli?
Motion to approve, item seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, item seven, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gorman, just one question. In your letter, it says, third paragraph down, "responsible availability during practices and games at the discretion of the athletic directors." Does that mean that there'll be somebody there during the practices, or is that just for games only?
Primarily what that refers to is that the athletic directors collaborate on sharing the trainers by prioritizing games and contests over practices.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Item number seven passes.
Thank you.
Next item, item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman subject, approves, subject to the Board of Education's approval, at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 regular meeting, an amendment, amendment number one to the agreement with Evergreen Center Incorporated, increasing the contract total to $533,720.08 from the original total of This is to provide residential and educational services to children with disabilities, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, item eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, item eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Aldo Mencaro?
Good evening. How come that went up so much, that amount? That's a big increase.
Elaine Skoronsky from the Special Ed Department. It went up because the first contract did not include the final year, so even though it had included next year's school year, the amount of money wasn't included. So unfortunately, it was short a year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Aldo Mencaro?
Hello. It says also that there was an increase in the tuition?
Correct.
Was that previously discussed, or this is something new and that's why it's been bringing up here now?
In addition to the year tuition that we had to add in to the up-to amount of the contract, we also had to add in additional amount because the rate increase was approved, and it was approved retroactive back, so we, it affected this school year. So we had to bring this school year's amount up to accommodate for the increase.
So you already were, you have knowledge that this increase was coming up?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number eight passes. To accommodate the attendance of a member of the administration, we're going to actually take on item number 12. Yeah, we're going to skip to item number 12. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a construction contract in the amount of $25,807,535 with CH Nickerson and Company Incorporated for the water pollution control facility phosphorus reduction upgrade, as submitted by Dennis A. Cuevas, General Manager, Water, Water Pollution Control. Alderman Napoli?
Motion to approve, item 12.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, item 12, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Cuevas, is there anything that you'd like to add, or?
I just wanted to add that, that we have here Lynn McHale from Corporation Council, who helped draft the construction agreement, Mike LeBlanc, obviously, Finance. We also have Dan Murphy from CDN Smith, who we retained for the design and also engineering oversight of the project, and Mr. Jonathan Miller from CH Nickerson, who's the president of the company.
Any questions? Any discussion? I'm seeing, is that, is that Aldo M. Sherman? Were you requesting to be recognized? Aldo M. Sherman?
Thank you, thank you, Dennis. Just for clarification, this isn't an additional $25 million. We've already approved bonding for this project in the past, and this is just the contract to implement that bonding.
That is correct. $25 million is part of what the total amount of the contract is going to be. We did apply for clean water funding. The application was submitted last week. The total of that application is $32 million, so 25 million. The total of that application is $32 million, so 25 million will be within that bond or the grant loan agreement that we eventually will sign with the DEP, since we're, we should be receiving 50% grant and 50% loan for this project.
Thank you for that clarification.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number 12 passes. Okay, so back to the original order. Item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves, subject to the Board of Education's approval, at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 regular meeting, a three-year contract from August 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, with the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, or better known as the YMCA, at no cost, to provide pre-vocational and employment training for students with disabilities as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number nine passes. Next item, item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a delinquent collection service contract with Tax Serve Capital Services LLC, commencing July 1st, 2018 and ending on June 30th, 2021, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item 10.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item 10, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Brunelli.
Thanks, Mike. What are the numbers? Was there a big change in their cost for the new contract? And also, what is the success rate we had with them?
There actually are no changes in the numbers. The, the collection fee is 15% of the debt, and that is paid by the obligor on that debt. And on the, the parking ticket side, just, just some of the mechanics behind it, after a period, I believe, of 14 days, if the ticket is not paid, it automatically doubles. And at that point, there isn't any additional accruing of interest on the debt, so under the arrangement with Tax Serve on collections, delinquent collections, they are permitted to keep 18% of the collections on that revenue. But again, it's after it's been delinquent for a period of time and turned over for collection before that occurs.
Where do we use them, for about 10 years already?
Since 2011. And their services are centered on the motor vehicles and the parking tickets. They also oversee as part of the contract a SFOF law booting program to generate collections. We actually use our internal in-house resources for the first nine months on motor vehicles, so they're levied on July 1st, and it's not before March 31st before those delinquent accounts are turned over for collection. I don't have on hand a report on their, their success, but what I can attest to is based on, for several years, the collection rate that the city's been able to achieve. It's certainly one of the tools in the toolbox that's helping us achieve very, very good collection rates here over a year.
Is it too early to tell? We went on an aggressive campaign the last year for out-of-state plates. People that were living in the city and using New York plates. Is that something we'll find out soon enough if we made extra money on that or?
It, it, it would probably be, it comes down to if, as a result of that, if the registration comes about, we would expect to see an increase in the, the grant list as it relates to the motor vehicle side with more vehicles actually showing up on the tax rolls. So the opportunity to see it, that really is October 1 of each year when the process begins to essentially do the valuation on the motor vehicles.
Okay, thanks very much.
Further discussion? The Chair will recognize Alderman Dijo Van Carlo.
Thank you. I apologize for talking out of committee, but Mike, the boot fee?
Yes.
The boot fee is charged to the person that owns the car?
That's correct.
Does the city get any cut to that?
Not on the boot fee. That is a, a separate fee, an additional fee in addition to the, the 15%, and that is directly accrued to the, the booting company and Tax Serve.
That's, in the future, that's not something the city would be able to do? Boot our own vehicles and make our own $175 per vehicle? Because I believe Tax Serve, they farm it out to another company, correct?
That's right. It's subcontracted with another group. Our primary objective is, is the collection of the principal and interest. You know, certainly, I don't know as far as the capacity internally, whether that's something we would venture down. That would have to be an evaluation to see if, if we have the capacity to do it.
Okay, because it just seems we're, we're handing a company $175 per vehicle that we should be owed the money, or some of it. I think we should get some kind of a cut from that money. It's the city that's owed the money. So I just, for future reference, maybe we can consider that?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number 10 passes. Next item on our agenda, item number 13. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a resolution urging the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, to reject the proposed permit by FNG LLC for the expansion at the Garbage Transfer Station located at 260 Railroad Hill Street, or to extend the term of FNG's permit so that the environmental justice law requirements are properly followed. Alderman Caro.
I move to approve the resolution in opposition to the proposed expansion of the Garbage Transfer Station on 260 Railroad Hill Street.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item 13, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that if possible, we send a copy of this resolution to DEEP tomorrow before the meeting.
Second.
I, Alderman Dorso. I will accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item 15 passes. Just to clarify on the date and the amendment to the item, I want to put the date effective, sending out the letter effective June 12. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. Following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve the 2018 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act applications to WIT New Opportunities Incorporated, Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury Incorporated, the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Sacred Heart High School, and the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association. Item number three is on consent to approve. Item two is on, received and placed on file. Item three is on consent to approve substantial amendment for CD Year 43, 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan to reallocate excess funds from three splash pad projects at Martin Luther King, Curtain, and Hamilton Parks in the amount of $130,853 to two air conditioning projects at the North End and River Baldwin Recreational Centers. Item six is on consent to approve the CD Year 43, 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan and authorize Mayor Neil M. O'Leary to submit the plan and execute any and all related documents. Item five is received and placed on file. Item six is on consent to approve, subject to the Board of Education's approval at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 regular meeting, a contract with Glen Terrace Landscaping in the not-to-exceed amount of $618,135 to provide playground improvement to Chase, General Lee, and Walsh Schools. Item seven is on consent to approve, subject to the rescheduled June 28th, 2018 Board of Ed Meeting, Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with PTSMA Inc., doing business as select physical therapy, in the not-to-exceed amount of $88,000 to provide athletic trainer services for interscholastic athletics. Item eight is on consent to approve, subject to the Board of Alderman, or Board of Education rescheduled meeting on June 28th, 2018, and Amendment Number One to the Agreement with Evergreen Center, increasing the contract total to $533,720.8 from $341,624 to provide residential and educational services to children with disabilities. Item nine is on consent to approve, subject to the Board of Education's approval, at its rescheduled June 28th, 2018 meeting, a three-year contract from August 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, with the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association at no cost to provide pre-vocational and employment training for students with disabilities. Item 10 is on consent to approve the delinquent collection services contract with Tax Serve Capital Services LLC, commencing 7/1/18 and terminating 6/30/21. Item number 11 is on consent to set a public hearing for June 25th at 6:55 PM in these chambers with respect to a bond authorization amendment to increase citywide energy savings, project appropriation, and bond authorization by $4 million to include street lighting acquisition and LED conversion energy saving measures. Item 12 is on consent to approve a construction contract in the amount of $25,807,535 with CH Nickerson and Company for the water pollution control facility phosphorus reduction upgrade. And item number 13 is on consent to approve a resolution in opposition to the proposed expansion of the Garbage Transfer Station on 260 Railroad Hill Street with the proviso that the resolution be sent to the Department of Environmental Protection prior to tomorrow evening's hearing. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli, to prove the consent calendar is read. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar, a no vote would be to disapprove, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to, oh. With respect to old business item number one. The Chair would recognize, oops, I didn't do that on consent, did I? Old business number one. All right. So the Chair would entertain a motion to, therefore, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, to approve the bond authorization amendment to increase the project appropriation and bond authorization by $1,800,000 for the installation of elevators at Sprague, Chase, Kingsbury, and Hopeville Elementary Schools. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. With respect to standing committees, the Chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $23,066.35 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So move.
Made by Alderman Dijo Van Carlo, seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Kula.
I just wanted to let everybody know that next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the Albanian Festival is going to be taking place on 38 Raymond Street, so everybody's welcome. It's a free event, great family event, music, food, so just wanted to let everyone know.
And Alderman Kula is buying the beer, so you're all.
Yes, first round.
Thank you. Anything further? With that, I would also note, you should have all got an invitation for tomorrow evening at 5:30. There's a number of police promotions that are going to be taking place here in these chambers as part of the Police Commission meeting, so if you can attend, it starts at 5:30. Please feel free to do so. None of them affect our good friend Alderman Dijo Van Carlo, though, so we'll have to work on that in the future, so, thank you. All right, anything further? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much.